And since we already had one roll call, I don't think we need to have another. Chris came back.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, couple of items. Do you want to start with the this one contract?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I just want to say for contract, I really just wanted to raise this again, see if anybody had any additional questions, because my note that we can have it on the January calendar. I am going to be talking to some safe about any commitments they might be able to make at this point in time to us, as far as if we would be interested in extending this contract to one year. The concern being that they won't get into for one year, only to have a gigantic increase in the next year. I've also asked staff to contact the other communities where that have contracts with some of the same, to see what kind of increases they have had along. So we'll get information from both entities, but I, again, if there's any additional information that I could be pulling together for you on this one, just.
I don't remember, didn't they add a cancellation clause?
Yes.
In their contract, thirty day notice cancellation. And the other thing was, do we know specifically how this is going to impact gators here?
I don't know specifically, but I can, we've had discussions with them that they are very comfortable working with swim teams and work closely with them and the other communities where they do.
Both Ethan Dale and Montgomery said that they, the swim teams over there were very happy with them, but with the way ours are funded and, you know, where, how we fund, help them out, the pay us, I'm wondering how this will impact, impact that.
Well, I think a good next step would maybe to have a meeting with swim state and gators, like they'll start working it out.
So, do you think we could actually, I mean, you could have a cancellation clause, but you have to ask about the three-year contract, keep it the same time?
Or you could ask.
We could ask. My guess would be, we'd want to see one year, just to make sure it's how we like it.
Sure, you always have a cancellation clause.
We might want to alter staffing or something like that, but I.
And bring it down?
Can't support it.
Did you say we had the option to renew at the same rate?
No, that's what we're talking about, maybe seeing what is the possibility of doing a, so I'll check on it. Okay. The next item?
If there's no. We belong.
Okay, next item is the utility aggregation update. And late November, Mark Burns, our consultant, went out to bid for the gas. If you remember, we did a one-year contract on the gas aggregation, so that we could hook up with the other communities when it was bidding time, which we have done. And he did give me all the data, I didn't know how much of that you wanted. We've gone through it one time, the very lengthy comparisons, and I have all that for you, if you're interested, but just in a nutshell, because this will come to you in January. But to give you, okay, so we took the bids, and we have a really good bid from IGS, who was our current provider, so your agreement will continue with IGS. And to give you a comparison, they've done, if you remember, the gas was the one, it's hard to give you a set, like, monthly figure, it's based on a formula, and just to compare, what they've, throw out some figures for a sense of comparison, our current formula would result in a four, and you can help me with this, you seem to understand this for good, a four dollar and eighteen cent result compared to the new formula, which is four dollars and a half a cent.
A half a cent, yeah, so.
What's that?
Seventeen and a half cents.
Four and a half percent.
Improvement.
Yeah, and that's assuming nine X gas at the three dollars, and, you know, it's.
Same thing all the way up to the, this mark where it breaks even at eight. And he said, the, so we have a better rate, all the way up to where it would get to the point of eight dollars, and then it's a break even, but they've never seen gas go over that for.
Yeah, because gas, natural gas has been, has been very cheap and becoming more plentiful, especially with all the Marcellus shale business that's going on, so nevertheless, it appears we got a four and a half cent break on, on gas. I've been thrilled, actually, looking at my utility bills this past year since this occurred.
Yeah, me too.
You know, comparing my usage and years past, it's, it's been a good, it's been a good move. So, what action is required of council to, do we have to approve this, adopt something?
We will have to adopt any master agreement, and actually, it'll simply be an agreement since we have an agreement with IGS. We would just be amending that, literally altering the dates, extending the terms and.
So, do you intend to have that as a piece of business for council in January?
Yes, I believe so.
Or at least, at least have it ready for first reading? Okay, good. And it's, when does the, when does the current agreement expire, excuse me?
Oh, wait a minute, you may need to hear. I know it all takes effect in April, but I believe it was, let's see. Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
So we're not looking at this kicking in first of the year or anything like that?
No, no, it, it, it won't happen, it won't appear on rates until April. Give me a second here.
I'm going to go see him in the hot water here.
Yeah, I think they're looking for us to amend December or January, so we'll do January, then they begin the, whenever they get the lists from eligible.
And if they start, okay, so they've got to go through the whole.
Right, although anybody who's currently on it will tend to do that.
Anybody knew that.
It's just anybody new.
Okay.
So it looks like it'll be up and going by the end of January. We'll have an option to opt out, though, if they want.
What's that about the opt out?
Into February.
There is an option to opt out.
There's an opt-out period, apparently you go through the same process.
Yeah, that's going to be my next question, that, I guess, in front of April, when I have the opt-out option.
Right.
They'll start, they'll send the mailing, it looks like.
February.
Yeah. So I think what residents are going to want to know is if we're starting this again, and if you can opt out, how does it compare? Is that, is IGS the best rate that we can get?
It's, it's very good.
And then is it better than due?
Because, oh, it's much, much better than due.
And I think that's what it's going to look now, what it may be.
Yeah, and, and our rate, just, just so our residents know, our rate now is, is better than the other communities, who we are now going to be part of their group, and then, so we're all getting an even better rate with this new one.
Sure, right now, it looks like it's four and a half cents better than it was last.
Four and a half percent better.
Four and a percent, it's actually, you know, like seventeen and a half cents.
Yeah, I think you have to kind of work on the percentage basis with this, because of, because that's the rate per unit gas.
Best rate we can get, then it's better than.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, it's the best one, I've had a couple of people call. Sorry, I think, but I've had.
I'm going to, that's where we're wasting everything out.
I've been hearing your shit, Ken.
Just, you know, sixteen eligible suppliers were invited to bid, so then, that's a good competition.
All right, excellent, so.
Yeah, that was good news.
We'll see this on the January agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Next item, I'd like to ask the chief to talk about a little bit, it's a mutual aid agreement with, they only have a mutual aid agreement with the police department, so that wasn't the only thing.
The mutual aid agreement is something that has been around for a number of years. A group of us got together last year and reviewed this, and I was on the committee that reviewed it, and we found that it had not been reviewed since probably nineteen ninety-one, so it was kind of outdated, it had some outdated language in it. There are forty-eight police agencies in Hamilton County, including the sheriff's office in the city of Cincinnati, so we cleaned up some of the older language that was in there, and after doing so, we turned it over to Dinsmore and Shoal, and Frost, Brown, and Todd, they, they were very gracious and agreed to look at it at a very, very much reduced rate. And then we passed it around to the individual solicitors of each community, and then they made their suggestions and cuts and what they wanted to see. And we made those, and then we sent it back out to Dinsmore and Shoal, and Frost, Brown, and Todd, and what you have before you is the, is the final product, and what we're asking tonight is that council consider signing off on this. Mr. Forbes has looked at it, he's in agreement with it, and basically what this does is it allows us to request law enforcement assistance from any other law enforcement agency in Hamilton County, be it the sheriff, or the city of Cincinnati, or Forest Park, or Springfield Township, and it also allows them to request help from us. So, it's, it's been around since, even before nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-one was the last revision, so the, this revision, twenty years later, will clean it up, and I guess after I'm long gone, twenty years from now, somebody else will pick it up and go, boy, we need to look at it again. So basically what we did was we cleaned up some of the language, added some, some things to it to make certain that everybody is covered. We presented it, like I said, to Dinsmore, Shoal, and Frost, Brown, and Todd, and that's the final product, and hopefully it's agreeable to everybody. And it just allows us to request help from other law enforcement agencies, and it does not place any financial burden on the village. If an officer comes in here and would, God forbid, get hurt in some manner, that still falls back on their agency, on their workers' compensation. If we go someplace and help someone, it falls back on our workers' compensation if we should get hurt helping their agency.
There's no, there's no exchange of money or votes in this, like, we call in, request someone in for a local situation, and it's.
No.
This is a, you help me, I'll help you.
Correct.
Situation, so, this is something that you would, is there a timeframe?
We are, you mean to sign off on this? We are one of the last communities to sign off, there's, I think, probably six left to sign off.
There's a bunch of communities in it, maybe even the University of Cincinnati and Xavier University.
Correct. And those, and that's some of the language that was changed, Xavier and the University of Cincinnati were not members, so they were not signatories to this in the past.
Is there a Summit Behavioral Police, that's a state of Ohio creation, right?
Correct, yes.
How does that work with other counties, I mean, like Forest Park, they're right next to Fairfield, and Fairfield's a lot closer to us than Addison, you know?
To, to be politically correct, once you step over that imaginary line that's up there, you kind of enter a different world. It's, it's, it's different, like Springdale Police, they, they butt up against Westchester, and it's two different worlds. It's.
So are you happy we don't share a county border?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough, so we can expect to see this on the January agenda, maybe? Okay, very well.
As I look through this, I didn't see that it would require retraining or anything, it is going to change what you are doing, have been doing.
No, it's not going to change anything that anybody has been doing in the county for the past twenty years. It's just cleaned up the language, made certain that all the law directors of all the communities were happy with it, that's, that's.
Just a checkpoint.
Yes.
All right.
Very well.
Could we ask for some financial assistance in this?
You can ask for anything, Greg, it's just, it's just say yes or not. All right, are we, everybody sufficiently finished with mutual aid? All right. Yes, you've got another item. Yeah, sure, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you so much.
These drawings, this is neat.
Yeah, this is neat stuff. Hot off the press information that we need to work on, I don't know how many of you are aware that the American Legion facility is for sale, and has been for a little while.
Very rare.
Yeah, and the, there's an entity that I'll identify as a well-known philanthropic organization, I guess you would say, who is interested in purchasing, who's interested in purchasing the facility, and I met with them today, they have just sold their existing building, and as part of their deal, they've been given sixty days to vacate, so they're all set to move a little quicker than they thought. They did, they were interested in talking about the parking, what you have in front of you is in, something I pulled out of the file related to the American Legion, so there's some markings on this that we don't have to pay attention to right now, but the key ones I did in color showing our property as it relates to, from the building over, we obviously own additional properties south of there, but, and then it also shows the Legion properties that I've identified for you in orange. The parking's important to them, that they have something, something in writing to share with their membership and have on record for use with the facility, and they are open to any number of options, they're, they're willing to purchase, they're willing to trade property and repave the whole lot, they're willing to do a long-term lease, again, they would repave the lot, because it desperately needs to be repaved, a lease with an option to buy, or any other creative situation that we can come up with. So I, I guess I would like to know the thoughts you have on this arrangement, so I can convey that to them and see what we would be able to work out.
Is it someone who's going to be leasing it out for weddings and that type of thing, or is it changing, the function's changing?
No, it will stay very similar to this, they, they themselves have meetings, and they, but they would have rentals also.
All right, so philanthropic, that's not the name of the place, it's fine. And you can't set.
It's a type of organization.
All right, so you can't name your organization.
Private following very similar to what we have there now. I, I would also say that they, they're, they would be an excellent community organization. I believe they would do a lot for our community, they would bring a lot of people to the community.
Okay, so they're interested that they put a bid on the property, right?
They will be.
Okay, so you're asking us to give them the lesson?
No.
No, mostly just we, what, what type of arrangement are we willing to consider for the parking?
See, we own the parking lot, the entire parking lot. And they're, they're not interested in engaging in a, you know, purchase of a building if they don't have reasonable assurance that they can utilize the parking lot as, as they wish, so the, the question is, what would we like to do about the parking lot? Do we want to write them a lease, for example? Do we want to perhaps sell them the parking lot for some amount of money? Do we want to trade the parking lot for the land they own, the, the Legion owns along Wynton Road, the stretch from, and, which is kind of weird, that the village owns the little bell tower.
Right.
Piece, and the piece with the shed on the side, you just wonder how some of these things grow up over the years, but they have the driveway in there, too, so at, at some point, you know, obviously, I think, think we would like to make sure that we have legal access to that driveway, so.
When you say the driveway, the one to Ireland?
No, no, no.
No, the driveway from.
The driveway from Wynton, that comes from Wynton, right?
Oh, yes, between that and.
Mark Twain House, right, that driveway is owned by the Legion property, so, you know, the, the question gets to be, what is council's pleasure, what are you all willing to do?
And, and you know, one thing we might want to consider is just maybe a, a lease to give us more time to work out something, you know, in the short term.
Maybe they wouldn't be happy with a lease, because the failing, or guaranteed a one or two or ten-year lease even.
They make a suggestion.
No, they're really open, I, I think a preference, though, would be purchase, that they're willing to consider the other option.
And they don't want this piece of land down here?
They're willing to trade it.
You know.
Flexible.
If we, if we do a land swap, or we sell to them, we no longer retain that parking space, I, I, it concerns me that we might have meetings here and not have space for the public to park.
Okay, I do want to point out that it doesn't, the parking that they're talking about doesn't go over that far, they're starting at the corner, they're building.
Straight up the driveway, straight back, all that parking behind the Mark Twain House would still be ours. So, you know, and, and right, and right now, it, the, it's sort of a handshake agreement with the Legion, you use the parking lot, we use the parking lot, everybody uses the parking lot. And it would probably be in our interests, whatever agreement is, that, you know, if we've got too many people here, which is unlikely to occur, may, that we can utilize some parking spaces in theirs, and that they have too many people like the Legion in their bingo days.
Turkey rack.
They'll use turkey rack, whatever, you know, I, I don't think anybody's trying to push anybody over the hill here, it's just, they, they just would like some assurance that, okay, they've got parking and it's not going to get held over their head. Frankly, if we could get them to pave the whole bloody shoot match, it might not be a bad trade for some, some parking lot needed to them, I mean, I'm thinking like a land swap, and they pave our parking lot, pave their parking lot, and.
Since they're a five oh one C three, they're not going to pay property taxes either way, right?
No, they, they do.
Oh, they do?
They do.
Are we currently receiving, I guess we're currently receiving property tax then from the.
The Legion.
From the Legion building, but, you know, another benefit of put that piece of parking lot in their hands is that it's taxable property.
Do they plan to have any employees working in that building? Do they, do they want to pay taxes?
I, I don't know for sure, I believe they may have two, two or three.
Are they waiting for us to give them some kind of feeling? Because, you know, what's really strange about all this is that I don't know who's buying it, and it seems like it's got to be our responsibility to make a decision based upon who's buying it, you know what I mean? I mean, I'd like to know who's buying it.
Well, our only decision is what to do with the parking lot, they want the parking lot.
Oh, I understand that, but that's our parking lot.
Yeah.
So, wouldn't it be appropriate for us to understand who's buying it? You're saying it's similar to what it's, who's going in right now?
Yeah, yeah, and, and we probably should do it, we can't hold executive sessions tonight.
Right.
And we should prob, I mean, it's likely something that we should hash details out, I think, of an executive session in January, but the, I think, the manager's point tonight is to point out what, you know, to get you grounded on what you can expect and what the questions you need to come up with.
All right.
Do they know, do they need to know anything right now, you were saying maybe they're short-term leases?
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yes, all right, not that it has to be short-term lease, but I think they have to know that we're going to be willing to work something out with them.
I think we all, sure, to what, to what extent we want to work out, but I think we're all in agreement that we want to work something out, sure.
This is such a strange distribution of the land, they always broken up, it seems like this is a perfect time for you to, to really look that over and see if you can't negotiate a much more comprehensive connectedness for them and for us, and it's a perfect time to do that, so you do need to take a few days, a few weeks maybe, and, and really think that through, and.
I think especially if they're, if they're willing to possibly trade or sell the property that's along Wynton Road, I think we need to explore.
Yeah, that's, that's greenbelt property, so you really can't do anything with it anyway.
But there's land beyond the parking lot that is greenbelt there, too.
So that's all greenbelt, that's shaded in?
No, that shaded stuff is all greenbelt, and then Mrs. Evans is in that little niche.
The parking lot ends right there.
Right.
And this is all grass.
Well, it's woods.
This, this is wooded.
Right, it's all wooded. As far as what's zoning, what's the zoning, I don't know, and that'd be a piece of information that we need to know, of what that particular.
When you, when you hit that little section right there, I guess September ninety-seven was purchased, you got a question mark there, but it is owned by the Legion?
Yeah, and that apparently dates back to wherever this piece was originally used from.
This was when they, they'd been thinking about that driveway since nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
The Legion does own that, they're, yeah, they own that.
But they never actually did anything.
Well, and they don't, they want, they don't want, it's a love-hate thing, no.
Well, I, my input would be, I think, we want to do something with them, and give them some assurance that parking will be available for them for their intended use, and I, I think we should try to give them that assurance.
Yeah.
And continue to talk.
Okay, great.
This is not pertinent to the deal, but will the American Legion continue to be in its , will they, are they disbanding, are they moving into another area?
Not that I'm aware of.
Like this chapter, will they?
I think that, that's a question I think you'd have to address the commander rings.
If you kind of get a little background on that, I was talking to this gentleman over there, it's, they're dying out.
Yeah.
And they don't have a lot of people following, you know, with American Legion, so they have to kind of disband it, just to have enough.
Girl Harbor Veterans Association officially disbanding, or it's, it's at the end of this year. All right. There are no too many, Mr. Burke.
Back then, were you going to be opening up the retreats? Yeah, I got a couple of things.
All right.
We already decided this advantage with Chris and Kenny leaving council because they were two of the workhorses on picking a council retreat date, getting the minutes together, full accountability on next steps by Mr. Burke, so typically we do something in February, I will send out an email and start looking at potential dates.
Generally, it's Saturday morning.
Yeah.
As we've had them in the past.
Okay.
Council also has a responsibility that we usually fulfill either in very late December or early January with regards to the fireman's benevolence or.
Right, the fire, the penalty, I'm sorry, I got the wrong state. The penalty fire.
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
All right, you work with them, and that'll be.
Sure. And then we have swearing in, new council members on January third.
Yeah, we're swearing a lot. Right, so we'll, that'll be the, the first item after we call the order, we'll swear new council members in, and move from there, I believe, maybe have a couple of presentations from the fire department, too, for, for various things that were, that were to happen in December, but for whatever reason cannot work out so well. So, there's that. Councilman Adams and council persons-elect Holter and Walther joined me on the, the annual Christmas light judging on the fourteenth of December. It was amusing and instructive, and he said no a couple of times, just for Kenny, because Kenny is so big on no, and, you know, the frightening thing, I just, I realized that I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-seven.
Eight.
Eight, eight, nineteen ninety-eight, so many years I've been driving the streets of the village, and I've gotten reasonably efficient at it.
The streets well.
But the, I've got a, a draft of the award, and I'm going to finish that, I'm debating whether or not to spend the money to have them laminated, I'm just going to print them on ice card stock, and that'll keep you from taking them to people's doors, because it might not work out, maybe I'll have to apply envelopes or something to put them in, but the lamination process seems like. But the lamination process seems like putting lipstick on a pig, you know? Making these things indestructible and able to last for a thousand years when they're generally going to end up in a drawer someplace. But I hope to have them done by the end of the week. So I'm going to distribute them to you all and everybody gets a chance to go out.
Did Mr. Burke's house win?
No.
Was it based upon wattage usage?
There were a number of criteria, haste, wattage. And they don't necessarily correlate. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Effort.
Effort.
Your guys are big on effort.
You're making this sound like it's a real quantitative effort.
What'd you think about the ground they have, this house, the ranch?
Loved it.
Oh, my God.
Boy, that's really...
The leg lamp was...
Yeah, but the leg lamp?
Actually caused us to stop and stop and take a further visit to check out the leg lamp. That was pretty cool. And I noted that on my old house on Cromwell, we planted it... We had a live Christmas tree one year that was maybe, I don't know, five feet, five and a half feet tall. And we planted it outside beside the driveway.
It's like 20 foot now, isn't it?
It's 50 feet. It's actually encroaches on the driveway that people have to trim the branches of it off to get in their driveway without running into the branches. I'm shocked, but there was no place else to put it. And it really, I had no idea it was going to get that...
You didn't have enough force.
It's a doorway spruce. It's like, gee whiz. And then I think it's about 20 years ago.
Does that make you wild for that?
No, as a matter of fact, I sold the tree along with the house. So, you know, somebody's got a chainsaw, that's their business. But the city of Cincinnati could use it next year perhaps.
There you go. How about the Commons? We could start that tradition.
Put a giant tree.
The giant tree on the Commons.
If Kenny had worked on a lot of it, that might be a great thing. Other than that, we're in the process of renewing our membership with the First Suburbs Consortium. And I'm going to ask that the manager continues our designated representative, which has been our general mode operation in the past. Mr. Moore had been a representative for a long time. And Jane, and David again. So is as... Yvonne has to work with these folks on a pretty regular basis. Continue to be the case. Let's see, Planning Commission will be meeting in January. Do we have a date? Not have a date yet, that'll be...
We don't have a date, do we?
Yeah.
Okay. The whole process for the zoning code rework is out for legal review and will hopefully be ready for review by the Planning Commission. The next step post that will be a public hearing of the Planning Commission for the new zoning code. And I expect that that will be well-attended because there will be a couple of controversial things in that. Recreational vehicle regulations, I suspect, will be controversial. And I think it is incumbent upon us as Planning Commission to put this stuff on the table. And if it's hooted down by a 90% majority, okay, that's fine. And if it's welcomed by a substantial majority, that'll make Planning Commission and council's decision that much simpler. The historical preservation, part of the story is going to be controversial also. I suspect, though I don't believe it's as onerous as one might be led to believe. So it's important that the facts about all this get conveyed clearly because it's certainly not our intention to rush through this but to make it, you know, transparent, open, give everybody a chance to weigh in on any changes that we make to the zoning code. If I had mentioned this to Mrs. Trinan before the meeting, but if you haven't been past the library, a new sign's burning tonight. It was on today when I went by and it's burning tonight when I came up here. I was thrilled to see it. There's still some if healigible work over there, but I think they may have run an extension cord to light the sign. I don't know. I don't know.
I talked to the ground at the library. She said they were taking care of the roof, so she's waiting for the next rain.
Yeah, she got it. She got it. Well, she got it. And, you know, we received a copy of that letter to the shopping center manager. And I made a paid visit to Mr. Hattenbauer and to Mr. Harkody. And it's been a long time on the phone with the director of the library. They seem to be taking care of their knitting. And the library is, you know, they're happy with things. That rain that we had a couple of weeks ago, that was pretty substantial, did not come into the building, which is good news. So apparently they've done something, something right there. So, and I'd asked, do I need to come to the next library board meeting? And she said, no, you don't have to. And I said, well, I'll see you in January anyway because they've got a bunch of new folks on the board. So I'm going to try to get down there to the library board meeting.
Well, there were a number of issues there. And so seeing some ladders up there and so on, it was obvious they were working at it. It'll be interesting to know how many of them have been checked off.
Yeah, it's, you know, we hope that they continue. That's a... That's a tendency we don't want in this village. And, you know, I've been kind of dragging this out because it's Chris and Kenny's last meeting. And I don't know if I'm trying to make this thing last till 8 o'clock. So you've got a one-hour reading, but I'm not going to do that. But, yeah, and we said thank you before, and I just want to say thank you again. I think we all up here understand the kind of commitment it is to sit on this council and to be involved in your community, whether you're a local council or not. But this job can be interesting and fairly rewarding. And that's why you do it, otherwise you wouldn't be here. So again, you know, I knew we gave keys and proclamations, but...
We can get in anywhere.
Anywhere, yeah. Any lock that that big old key fits in, you can get in. Otherwise, you probably don't want... But nevertheless, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So good.
Thank you.
Amen.
Is there any discussion?
Applause.
Nice closing act. Nice closing act.
I think I'm sitting over here with a second on my key, so...
I just never know what my captives do yet. This is all the freedom that...